Okay. It's five o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Board of Finance to order. Today is Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. Uh, it is, um, we have a quorum of members all present, so, um, here at City Hall, we have Board of Finance member Lorraine Pesky, Wendy Trab, Christopher Bayes, and James Wright. That's our quorum, and we can jump into the agenda, but first, if we could please stand and pledge the flag.
And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
And thank you, Mr. Bayes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Uh, and we don't have anybody watching us online, do we? No, oh my goodness. It really is just you, Dan, anything to add? All right, moving on to two, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September 17th, 2024. I'll move. Thank you, Ms. Trab, second, and Ms. Pesky. Questions or comments on the minutes?
Leave. Sorry. Believe I may have an abstention on that one.
Oh, yeah, possibly, you're right. Yes.
Yep, abstention.
All right, so, um, let me call the in-favors first, in-favor?
Aye.
And, uh, abstentions?
One, aye.
That would be Mr. Bayes. All right, item three, I'll entertain a motion to, um, I guess it's just a discussion. Um, I'll entertain a motion for discussion purposes, um, to open the meeting for, um, the Public Works and Public Safety budgets.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
Second by Ms. Trab, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, um, this, this is in response to the request, uh, when we met at the last meeting, and I think Ms. Pesky, you were asking, um, or Mrs. Trab, you were asking, um, what those deficits were in those particular lineups, it was part of the, um, audit review. Um, and this is the memo that, uh, Olivia put together.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. Straightened it right out.
So, um, I know a lot of these deficits, what we find is that it's usually about timing, timing of the projects, when it's budgeted, when it's, um, fully extended. Other than that, we're good? We're good, any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, good, all right. We, I called for a motion and a second, uh, for discussion purposes, I don't, I don't think we need to do anything further on that.
Move.
Uh, thank you, all right, moving into item four. Actually, I already got the motion and second, I should call it just to close it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good, there comes Chrissy Anderson. All right, item number four, I will entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer request for FY 2324, as further described in the Manager of Budgets letter dated October 2nd, 2024, having been previously approved, um, by City Council.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
And second by Mr. Bayes. And the floor is open for questions.
Um, I'd like to see a little more detail, um, in these, I mean, we just have transfer amounts, um, but there's really no, no description on what's being moved to where.
So, um, in each one of these, the transfer requests, for instance, the first one, out of Contract Services, City Real Estate Line Item 5199, into Capital Reserve for Public Works Facilities. Um, I think if you look at those line items, you'll find out where those surpluses are coming from, and then the Capital Reserve is the sinking funds for capital projects. Was there anyone in particular that you? I don't know, how was your recall on those line items? Can you, can you name each one?
Not quite yet.
Uh, yeah, I don't need them line by line, you don't have to.
No, that's okay, so if you look at, like the mayor said, if you look at the two below the line items, it gives you that Capital Reserve, and then, you know, what department for Capital Reserve, and from the from, it gives you the line item that it's coming out of in the general fund, so your Contract Services, out of your City Real Estate, um, Department, and it just kind of follows down, so then you have your building maintenance out of the Animal Control. Is that the kind of detail that you were looking for, or do you want?
Yeah, so these are all 2324 surpluses that were turned over to capitals, yeah.
Yes, yeah. And not all of the surpluses were being turned into Capital Reserve, there were a couple of requests from the department head to turn these funds into Capital Reserve, or certain funds. Uh, those line items like salaries, or those line items that it did not make sense that we would move it into a Capital Reserve, we did say no, um, and those, um, those are reflected as not, uh, not transferred. So I think, I, I think you'll find, especially if you go back and look at last year's budget by line item, and by department and line item, so some of the questions that I asked, similar to what you were asking, is like Contract Services and Real Estate, what was that contract service that didn't get paid? So, um, if you go into those departments, you'll find that, that detail. Other questions?
Mayor, um, so then to go into the next section, which is the Budget Amendments, Year End Amendments, I'm assuming that's for those departments that had, um, overages that needed to be covered, correct? And, and I went back to our June year end, but I'm assuming the June year end, year end numbers might have changed since the last report we got, so that, some of them didn't, I, because I was trying to find out, some of them didn't coincide, because they were probably either, um, something that changed before then. Okay, so those are just transfers to cover that, because obviously you can't have an overage in the account at the end of the year.
Right.
Correct?
Right. So we send that over, like we, we finally closed out the books for fiscal year 24.
Right.
And that's part of it, cleaning up any of those overages.
And then the contingency was the last line of
Right.
that balanced everything
Yes.
together in it, okay.
Yeah, because we were still paying, like, a lot of bills and leftover, when we would have gotten that report in June, which is also why I sent those numbers.
And encumbrance could have changed between, since we saw it, and, and whatever, okay.
There is a half a million dollars, um, to the ISF
Mm-hmm.
in health insurance account contributions.
So what that is, is, um, that actually should have been made in the beginning of the fiscal year. It was never made, but what that is, is it's a prepay. So because we have to have the city contributions to the employees by July 1st, we pay that out of a prepay account, and then once our next fiscal year kind of takes effect, July 1st, we just move those funds out of the general fund to clean up that prepay, so that's all that that is.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, if there are no other questions, then I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five. So, um, this is, um, a discussion, um, potential, um, action, with regard to the request for a transfer of $302,601.17 surplus from the Board of Education's general budget into the Capital Reserve account for IT and facility projects to be determined. So for discussion purposes, do you want to move this?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Trab.
Second.
And second, Mr. Wright. Okay, um, the letter of request, as you see, is, um, is included, it's, um, somewhat vague, usually they'll have some specific projects that they like to, um, put this into Capital Reserve with a line item, so there's some controls. And I think the only thing that I would add is, this request, as you can see, is dated September 25th. We received it on September 30th. Um, and unfortunately, um, because this year we are actually on time with our audit work, the, um, accounts were closed out, and this letter is a little late. If I'm, if I'm speaking for my, uh, financial team over here. So the funds, when the trial balance was issued for the auditor, it reflected this 302,000 being, um, left and, uh, devolving to the fund balance.
Yes.
To, to the city's fund.
To the city's fund balance, yeah. Um, and I think the only other thing that I would add to that conversation is, um, I'm surprised that nobody from the Board of Ed is here. Um, the only other thing I would add is, you will recall that it was the Board of Education's decision that it was not going to pay its final installment into the Internal Service Fund, that was 1.4 million dollars, and that they withheld 278,000 and change, um, and premium cost shares that had not been turned over or deposited into the city's, um, general fund. So, um, I think all of those facts lead us to a discussion, although I did move it as discussion and potential action. I don't know how the board feels about this request and what it can do.
I'll start.
Yes, please.
Um, so, so anyone may have recalled that last month, um, prior to the meeting, I had requested detailed information on 1.8 million dollars of additional spending that the Board of Ed had done specifically in June, right before the end of the year, and I had asked, obviously, through the Accounting Comptroller's Office, um, what the gap, you know, process was, and it's, it has to be spent in the year of. To this point, I have not received any information yet, so for me, this 302,000 is actually 2.1 million, because I'm still looking for information on 1.8 million that was spent in June, um, so I consider this two-
I've requested that every year since I've been here.
Yeah, so, so I, I sort of this 2.1.
Have never received it, so.
And I think for the taxpayers, it's important to understand that this is for the taxpayers, because we're constantly saying that we're under budgeting the Board of Ed, and in this case, I'm, I'm considering, because of lack of information, I don't know, because of lack of information, I'm considering that they had over 2 million dollars left at the end of the year, um, which means going into this year, um, that's a problem with the timing of audits. By the time you close out your books and everything, it's months later and you, and you don't know. We have already passed their budget for the, for the current year. Now finding out that there potentially could have been, and it might not be, it might be only 300,000, but without any information, um, for, on my part, I have to say it's 2.1 million. So, um, at that point, and in, in consideration of what the mayor was talking about with the health insurance not paying the pri, the, the one at the end of June, and obviously, um, the premiums coming out of our account, correct, for July, August, and September, without any payments into it, um, albeit, a portion of that was the Board of Ed's portion, but not making any commitment to pay for those three months that the, um, faculty was being covered. Um, I would consider any surplus going back to the general budget or general fund, only because of the lack of information I've received, and I, and I would welcome, if I, you know, if I can receive some detailed information, I would welcome to, uh, change that in the future, but I'm considering where we are, and being frustrated that, um, you know, a simple printout would have started, um, my, my research, and then in the printout, I could have asked for much later, but not having anything in front of me, and so therefore, for me, it's not, it's not anything that I would act on right now, and if I did act on it, it would be to put it back in the general fund for the taxpayers. Okay.
And to that point, uh, the requests that, um, Ms. Trab made on September 16th, September 16th, um, was for, um, and specific to those line items where those expenses were, um, taken from. Uh, I did forward that very detailed request to, uh, Mr. Wilson, uh, to Mr. Petrazelli. I did CC Carol Anderson and Heather Abraham, just so there's a public record of what was being requested, and, um, reminded them that in accordance with the city charter, um, the power to obtain information, um, in yours to the Board of Finance, that you can compel any board to provide information, um, or material, which would be of assistance in its, in the performance of its function. So I reminded them, there's a charter provision that says, these requests can be made for these purposes, um, and we did not receive a response to that request.
Yeah, this is, uh, in a sentiment I share with Ms. Trab, I mean, I've been on this board for almost five years now, and I've asked for that spend down report pretty much every, every single year, and was never provided it. I understand there's a certain level of, of course, bills that are left to that time period. You know, maybe it's to the tune of a million dollars, that, that's normal, but then we're still looking at 800,000 dollars, um, of a rundown in a 30 to 45 day period. You know, they come here in May, their performance report is as such showing a, you know, 1.5 to 2 million dollar surplus, and June 30th, it's down to 2, 300,000 dollars, as it is every year, and it has been since I've started, so, um, it's concerning for me, it's concerning that, um, we still don't have a performance report, um, so, um, I'm inclined to, to deny this request and, um, look into further action with Corporation Council on, on how we start to use our, um, voice and, and power as a board to, to get a control on what's going on here, because it's not, um, something's not kosher, so.
Where do we stand with the, uh, FOI on the bid process?
So, um, we did receive, um, some documents, um, a few emails, a one-page, uh, summary spreadsheet that purports to disclose, um, numbers that four insurance carriers provided, uh, but we have not seen the request for proposals, and we have not seen the proposals that were submitted, and we have not seen, um, a contract. So, um, to that end, Corporation Council did press, uh, the superintendent to ask if this, uh, because it came in in a couple of waves, it came in, you know, items one and two, here are your responses, items three and four, here are your responses, um, and when he, they were pressed to say, is this it? Is there anything else that you will be providing? The answer was, you have everything that we have. Um, so Corporation Council did pursue, um, uh, I don't, I, I guess it would be a complaint, a filing with the FOI Commission. And, uh, that, um, was, uh, sent out to the FOI Commission two weeks ago. So we don't have, um, I don't, I don't think there's a complete record, certainly there's no, um, RFP with the scope of, you know, what are the services that they're seeking? There's no bids, and the summary spreadsheet that was provided had mathematical errors in it, had assumptions in it, really the kind of documentation that I don't feel, when you talk about data-driven decisions, certainly wasn't the kind of data that you would want to make a decision on, particularly if it's a 30 million dollar contract. So, um, FOI complaint, it was filed, um, there were two more FOI requests after that, that really clarified additional information we were looking for, have not received those, and, uh, last week, a fourth FOI request, because to, um, to Board of Finance member Chris Bayes's point, if a request from a Board of Finance member says, I am looking for an explanation of these documents, and there's no response, then it leaves us to our devices, what are those? Let's do it through an FOI. There's a public record, this is a process that is sanctioned by the state. Uh, if we don't feel we're getting the, um, full and complete response into that, then the process is to go ahead and, um, ask the FOI Commission to review what we've received. Um, and short of legal proceedings, I really, I don't know what else we could possibly do.
Can we, um, withhold this request with stipulating that certain provisions that we, it might come?
The, um, withhold the request, like take no action on it this evening, or, um?
Council write up something that this is being, uh, rejected by the Board of Finance?
Yes.
Such reasons, lack of openness and, uh?
If that is the sub-motion you'd like to make, um, so that that communication goes to the Board of Education, I think that would be.
I would, I would disagree, I don't even think that's necessary.
You just want to deny it?
Yes, because, uh, number one, um, as, as the financial, um, department has already said, the audits complete, the books are closed, that money's slated for transfer into the general fund already. Um, this is too short, too late, um, you know, they're, they're a dollar short, whatever the saying is. Yeah, dollar short, day late, um, that money's already slated for the, um, general fund, number one. Number two, we're not getting not only documents that are requested by, by city charter, that Board of Finance members are requesting, that we're not receiving those financial documents, that's number two. We want to go to number three, we're not receiving performance reports on their budget. Uh, I, I mean, I, I don't know what else we could possibly do at this point. I, I'm, I'm not inclined to give them any sort of longer leash, um, uh, this needs to be reined in, and, and I, I will request that Corporation Council's here at our next Board of Finance meeting, and I want to know our options.
Okay.
My only counterargument to that is, you're not going to get anything by doing nothing. And if you could make it clear to them that you're not getting this because of X, Y, and Z, you might get something, but, uh, to Mr. Bayes's point, we haven't gotten anything in the past, and why should we think we're getting it now?
It, it's just, if it was one thing, you know, i- if this, this request came late because their office is backed up, or something like that, and they had come to this board with some reasonable explanation as to why this is so late, why they're not providing the financials that another Board of Finance member requested, while they're not providing the financials in the way of performance reports, I think that'd be a different story. But I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think that, I, I don't think the attention here is to comply with any requests, and that's just my opinion on the situation, I, you know, if it was just one thing, I get it, but now, like I pointed out, three things that are inconsistent with the way, um, things should be done, and that's, it's not opinion, it's, it's matter of fact, so.
So, I don't know, Ms. Pesky, did you have anything to add this evening? To this, I know, I'm sorry.
No. It's all been said, yeah.
So I think what I'll do is, if, uh, and I haven't called this motion, um, if the, um, sub-motion to, um, the discussion is to deny the request, but with an explanation as to why it is being denied, for the three points that were just raised by Mr. Bayes, um, and an expectation that, you know, that this is one organization, and if one department is withholding the information that the Board of Finance needs to make, then it's very difficult for there to be an approval of, of request of this nature.
Because I'll tell you what, if Public Works was doing the same thing, and wasn't providing, if we had asked the Director of Public Works to provide financials for his department that we didn't know made sense, and then he asked us, you know, to come here and, and ask us for a, for a surplus being transferred into capital, again, not providing us any type of, um, financials that we request, and then not submitting his, um, or, you know, you know, not inputting information to the system for our finance department to pull the performance reports, to put in front of us, I, I would feel the same way, it's, it's not, again, it's just.
All right, so, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If the other factors were not of an issue as they are this year, and it was simply the timing of it coming late, would we be able to have made an exception and move that money in, into their capital? Or, it's not an exception, I mean, it would just be- we could do it somehow?
I mean, it would, technically, yes, um, but it, it depends on when, so like, for, I know right now the auditors are about to start doing the financials, so that's what I was going to kind of say, like, even regardless of anything else, like, if we said, hey, let's wait until we get this stuff, well, it's going to be, it will almost get to a point where we won't be able to, because once they start going through all, once they start making all the drafts of the financials, and then going through all their tech reviews and all that, it becomes a lot more difficult, um, to change that, and to, and to, uh, change all the financials, because it is a bigger, um, because they actually did this last year, too, they wanted to try to move stuff, and same thing, and it, it really creates a lot more work on their part, and they don't like that, so, um, I would say, so, yes.
This is a lesson learned for all of us.
Yeah.
Um, because we have been behind in, in the last two years.
Right.
And so these kinds of, of challenges didn't come up, because everything was still open anyways.
Right, um, and I think, and I, and maybe that's over, um, stepping, but I just, it's weird to me that that is a request coming that late, though, because I know, like, we had to submit our trial balance to the auditors, both the Board of Ed and ourselves, by September 30th, and I know they had, had already submitted their trial balance, like, be, well before September 15th, um, because we had actually caught some stuff, and they had to go back and change things, but they'd already submitted there, so they did know, I mean, if you already submit your trial balance, usually you kind of know where you're at, and you know what your surplus is going to be, so, um, it's a hard time.
Poor financial, it's poor financial practice.
I mean, yeah, and then I'm, I know, maybe that's wrong to say, but I just, there was time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that, again, alludes to, it's a poor financial practice.
Mr. Anderson, you have a question?
Excepted this late.
Yes, uh, my mic working today? It's been spotted last few minutes. Nope.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Just barely, yeah.
Barely, you're quiet, but we can hear you. Oh, okay.
Your lips are moving, but I can't hear you.
There we go, I'll try shutting the door, too, I apologize, troubles with Zoom meetings. I think to Lorraine's point, um, we have a long history of making sure we're, you know, flexible and accommodating when it comes to applying, uh, any overages or surpluses to capital, but I would be very, very hesitant to make exceptions that would be considered a prior period adjustment. Our, the audit that we're issuing is supposed to be final and closed as of when it's issued, and our, our lenders, our creditors are using that to establish our bond rating, to establish our interest rate, and if we get into the habit of changing our financials after an interest rate was issued, that could have long-term effects for the city.
Well said.
I understand.
All right, so, um, again, I'm just trying to draw from the conversation, so the motion was for discussion, but I'm hearing a sub-motion to deny the request, uh, with communication explaining, um, what the Board of Finance's expectations are with regard to, um, the provision of more information, answering or providing data when requested, uh, performance reports, um, and timely requests, have I covered everything?
Yes, I would second and summarize.
Yeah, I, I, again, I think, and Mr. Wright just alluded to it, um, we still have that large hole that they've created with the ICF money.
Yes.
Or I, excuse me, ISF, um, money, so, you know, that's why I think I want to bring Corporation Council here next meeting.
We can do that.
Um, and, um,
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully by then, you know, we'll have a response from the FOI Commission. Hopefully some, uh, answers to the most recent FOI request, um, and some recommendations for a path forward to make sure that, um, the communication back and forth between the Board of Education and the city, the finance office, and information coming to the Board of Finance is, um, also done on a timely basis.
Yep, I, I think Mr. Anderson had a great point, um, you know, in, in what he said, and, and that point can be included in the letter, and, and again, it's just not safe financial practice for the city at this point to go ahead and, and set that as the precedent. Again, of course, audits, you know, the past few years have been late because of transitions in, in the finance office, that's not the intention, I don't think, of the finance office at this time, or the city moving forward. So, it, it's either we keep up with our principles, or we keep bending our backs until, um, you know, uh, until we aren't any longer, and it affects our bond rating and interest rates, so.
All right, so if I've summarized the conversation correctly in the form of a motion, I think that was a motion, Mr. Wright, you were trying to make, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, so motion made and seconded, and again, I'll read what I heard, that the request is denied, um, but that communication be sent to the Board of Education. but that communication be sent to the Board of Education explaining that, you know, due to the lack of, of additional information that had been previously requested, the lack of budget performance reports and the timeliness of the request.
Can we make the timeliness of the request the, the very first?
The primary.
Okay.
The, the, the primary, and, and the others happened.
And I would explain, you know, the, the, our thought there, the, the poor financial practice of doing it this late.
And what, what Chris Anderson.
Right.
The bond rating and.
And our controller alluded to.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and then secondary, you know, it's also unbecoming of the Board of Ed to, you know, not provide proper financial reports, which doesn't give this board the proper insight into where, you know, spending of taxpayer dollars is. I think that's the other, that's the other line that I would try to summarize, however you, however you see.
I'm always looking to my experts. Does this sound like we've covered everything, do you think? Okay.
We were just, we were kind of saying, like, and I think establishing for the future, like, a certain timeline for when they're allowed to submit the surpluses. Because like I said, I would say by the end of August, they should, I mean, at least just even from this year, they should have a pretty good idea of what that is. I mean, all the other departments do, so.
Right, yeah, there's, unless, again, if they come back and say, we're having massive trouble in our finance office. And, you know, we only have one staff member in there and he's running around like a chicken with his head cut off? Sure. I'll, I'll definitely be sympathetic to that and understanding, you know, that that's what's happening. But we've got no communication that that is what's happening in this office. So I don't, I, I just don't understand what's going on. And, and that, that doesn't make me feel, feel very good about the situation, so.
All right. Last call for comments or questions. What is the motion? I'll read it one more time.
Got it, yeah.
All right, so the motion is to deny the request for the transfer of the $302,611.17 surplus. And a request that, that the mayor send communication to the Board of Education explaining that the timeliness of the request.
Mayor, I'm sorry if I, if I can, this would be to Mr. Petrazzello and Mr. Wilson, correct?
That is correct.
Not the Board of Education.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, because you, you did say.
I said Board of Education, I know, that's.
Yeah, so this, this should be to the superintendent in the finance office that letter should be going to.
Okay, all right.
With CCs to the Board of Ed.
Usually we do that, but do.
Right, yeah, but it should be addressed to the finance office and the superintendent, since they're the ones who made the request.
Okay, good. So Heather, are we okay? Do you think you have it? All right. I'm going to read it one more time. So the, the sub-motion is a motion to deny the request for the transfer of the FY 2324 surplus of $302,611.17 and direct the mayor to communicate to the superintendent and Director of Business Services with a CC to the Board of Ed chairs that the timeliness of the request, coupled with the lack of budget performance reports and answers to a prior request for additional information with regard to FY 24 expenditures, is part of the reason why it's difficult for the board to make these decisions. And we could wordsmith that. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to call this motion all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right, city budget performance reports. I need a motion to accept the reports as filed.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
And second, Mr. Anderson, are there questions or comments on the performance report? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Item 7, as you, I believe the Assistant City Clerk sent out a message. Unfortunately, we did not receive the Board of Education budget performance reports. So I would be looking for a motion to table this.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
And second by Ms. Pesky. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. So, thank you, Ms. Trab.
Second.
And second by Mr. Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go to Mr. Farley first. Thank you. Controller, anything? Okay. Anything from our budget manager deputy? Okay, all right. Then Item 9, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
And second by Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, to the screen first, anything to add, Mr. Anderson?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wright? Mr. Bayes?
Nothing.
Ms. Trab?
Nope.
And Ms. Pesky?
How are we doing on the revaluation?
So, uh, early reports are starting to roll in. Oh, yeah, that's a good, that's a good segue. Our city assessor has resigned and has gone back to a position he held in Waterbury. The good news is our deputy assessor stepped seamlessly right into the role of the assessor. She has assured me that the revaluation is moving along. Reports are coming in positively. There's still quite a bit of work to do between now and February 1st. You know, we'll keep our fingers crossed that we don't have to go on extension. I know the last several years, we've been on extension through, if not February 1st, March 1st, before we have to get it.
And February 1st is when we would get the detail on it? Or February 1st is when they're done looking at everything?
So I, I believe February 1st is a date that is required to be filed with the state. And that's usually when they release the information to the Board of Finance and City Council. So, but, you know, early information coming from the appraisers is more reflective of what all the other municipalities have been experiencing since 2020.
Do you have any idea of what they do first? Do, do they do businesses or residences? Or, I, I'm just thinking, i- is it going to be different if Stop &amp; Shop is still open?
No.
In the downtown plaza or Stop &amp; Shop closed? You know, in, in that kind of a, a sense?
Yeah, no, because this is the midterm, this is the paper assessment, if you will. So what they do is they just look at what, you know, happened with transactions over the past five years. And they apply, you know, that, that factor, multiplication factor, to, to the property. So it's not, it's not that they go out and they say, you know, this commercial space, which used to house a supermarket with, you know, $2 million worth of inventory, it's all based on the square footage. So regardless of, I mean, the, the inventory in businesses is not part of the assessment. It's the fixtures inside the business, and it's the square footage of the building. So the closing of Stop &amp; Shop would not impact the value of that building.
But it will to our tax base eventually, if that remains empty.
I don't know. I don't, no, I don't think it does. Because your assessments are based on appraised values. Appraised values based on square footage, based on economic conditions, based on sales history.
Probably thinking personal property.
But the property, yeah, yeah, the.
You're talking about like the inventory of the store? I, I don't believe they, I don't believe they count that in assessment.
What I'll do, instead of us speculating, let's invite the assessor to the next meeting. That, that would be. It'll get you a chance to meet her.
Yeah, and, and it will be helpful to know exactly what, because there's a piece of me that's thinking that I'm excited about what, what this can mean for us. But there's also a piece of me that knows that everything isn't all hunky-dory. And so, you know, there's, although they were decrepit, there's no buildings on the Torington Company property. And I, and I don't know what that means anymore.
Yeah, so that square footage is no longer part of the, the building site? So if the value of those buildings was $1 million, then there's $1 million less in our grant list.
But in that case, the vacant land might be more valuable than the buildings.
In that case, yes, I would venture to say it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mrs. Mayor, before we go, I understand there was a city hall, Mr. Scott passed, is that right? From the tax collector's office?
Yes, um, yes. Tragically, there was a, he was in a car accident and he passed away. I got news over the weekend about it. The tax collector, obviously, when you work every day with somebody, there's a whole lot of grieving. And they did ask if we would tolerate them being able to close the office to attend memorial services. I think it's the kind and the right thing to do. And told her I felt that it was certainly something the boards would agree to.
I, one more?
Yeah.
Um, we, we got our meeting scheduled at our, at the last meeting. And it, it, we haven't had an OPEB meeting, or am I wrong? Because they, they're in May and November, but we haven't had any. And, I mean, we've talked about it, when the auditor was here, we, we talked about those funds, but we haven't had those meetings.
No, and I know that the OPEB report is part of the fiduciant report when they come on those quarterly basis. They usually give us an update on the OPEB valuations. But we certainly could bring them in, do an OPEB meeting in November.
Just to have, well, it looks, it kind of sounds like November might be a little busy. But, so that we, we do do that and so that it's part of the record, correct?
Right. I think the challenge that we've also had is trying to do that in May when we're setting a budget.
Yeah.
I almost feel like we should change those meetings, you know, do them, you know, March and, you know, September, maybe.
Sure.
So, and we can talk about that and reach out to fiduciant, actually, fiduciant and Steve Lemansky? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we could do that.
Thank you.
Nothing further, Mayor?
All right, um, that was it, did I hit everybody? Did I get everybody? Everybody had a chance to talk? All right, well then, if there's no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes, thank you, Mr. Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.